Welcome to the historic Carson House tonight. We've got some, just, this is one of the highlights of our board's meeting schedule each year. We come out here to the place where in 1842, just for everybody present and those watching, in 1842, the North Carolina Legislature went and formed what we know as McDowell County. 1843, in this very house, maybe in this very room, we don't know. But we know it was in this house they met. And what the leaders did at that day, they met and organized the county government. And also, they formed, very interesting, they formed the boundaries for the city of Marion. So this is just a very special place to our board and to the historical aspect of where we come from as a board. And so we're glad to be here tonight. And as always, I would like to ask everyone to please stand. We're going to begin the meeting with a prayer and then the pledge. Tonight, Commissioner, leaders, please, now pray.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us. Father, we pray that the Lord should forgive us of our sins and our shortcomings and where we failed you this week. Father, help us to conduct the business of the county here this evening, that you would receive honor, you'd receive glory out of everything that's done. Bless everyone who's here gathered today. Touch our government, we thank you for your son, Jesus, that died for our sins. Thank you for saving us all. In Jesus's name we do pray. Amen.
And Commissioner Brannan?
Anybody over here?
Come to the pitch, you please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks so much. Okay, this time, gentlemen, you have the commissioners, you have the minutes from the September regular session and October special session. What's the pleasure of the board concerning approval of the minutes?
Approval.
Have a motion? Second discussion? All in favor, both say aye. The opposed, last aye. Okay? At this time, you have tonight's agenda before you. What's the pleasure of the board? Are there any additions or deletions first?
Mr. Chairman, item B and our appointments will be postponed until next month.
Okay. Duly noted. Any other additions or deletions there being now? What's the pleasure of the board concerning approving tonight's agenda?
Wish to approve the agenda to see if we have one deletion noted.
Okay, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, last aye. Let's move to our first item on our point schedule. This is the Gold Festival fundraising request. And we have Ms. Carol Price with us tonight. Carol normally would say come to the podium, but we don't have a podium here tonight. So if you want to just stand and right where you're at, and we're glad you're here, we'll hear you later. Okay?
Well, thank you for letting us come tonight. I appreciate the time. I also have with me our chair of our Tourism Development Authority Board, Helen Sullivan, is here with me tonight. And also, back here is Deborah Milligan. Deborah is with Rutherford County Beckelhaus Museum, and she is also with the North Carolina Gold Trail. And she worked last year with Old Ford's Committee to host the official North Carolina Gold Festival there in Old Ford. And then, standing bareback there in the back is David Blackwelder. David is an Old Ford resident, and he chaired the committee last year to put on that gold festival. So, we are here because the town of Old Ford met, and they would like to grow this event and this festival there in Old Ford, particularly with that designation. And it just really needs a lot of time and attention to bring it up and make it into an event that is going to attract the people that the town is interested in getting. So, the Tourism Authority met, and we talked about how to fund this. And Deborah was really very helpful last year. Deborah has been with the Beckelhaus Museum now for how long, Deborah?
It's almost a year.
A year. And again, part of her duties is to promote the North Carolina Gold Trail. The Gold Trail was, we talked about it back in 2014, I think it officially kicked off on bond and with marketing efforts in 2016. And that project has the ability to partner with, what, 30 counties or 33?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three counties. So that's an opportunity right there, just to bring in more gold-related vendors to really grow this event. She also does a lot of really interesting things. She was just telling me, last week she was in Georgia, and I'm going to butcher this word, so I'm sorry. But it was the Georgia...
It was the Blue Ridge Novice Madic Association.
See, that's why I'll butcher that. So she actually spoke to those 400-plus participants that were there, representing different coin organizations throughout the Blue Ridge. Those are the types of organizations and opportunities that you need to have to help grow this festival. So just imagine, if you would, having those coin dealers there, in addition to people that she actually brought in last year when she volunteered with the committee. She had an international storyteller there that did a great job. And she was, you know, just sharing gold stories that were there locally. She's been to Washington, I mean, I don't think we paid her anything, did we? No, she just came and volunteered. So, it's that quality that we're looking for, to grow those types of vendors, so that hopefully this vendor relationship, what actually in the future, pay for her salary, which is $4,500, she would begin working immediately. So the town of Old Ford met, they agreed to pay a third of that contingent on the county pitching in for a third and the TDA pitching in for a third. The TDA board met, and they agreed to do the same. So, and Deborah's here, David's here, Helen is here. So if you have any questions of us, anything for discussion, let us know. But we're looking for a little financial partnership to get this up and running, and like I said, hopefully, with the new vendor growth, then that would be able to pay Deborah's salary in the future.
Okay. So the TDA board was 100% behind it.
Yes.
The alderman and the mayor were for it.
Yes.
And so now you're here tonight.
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right. Comments, questions for anybody present?
Well, I'd just like to take just opposed. We have...
Is Don with you too?
When would you make the vote? Before or after the public presentation?
We'll vote, it's on the agenda, so we'll take action right before the public, before the public citizen comment.
Before.
Yeah.
But then may I make a statement with this point?
Well, Don, I'll introduce anybody who might be watching who does not know Don Markham. Don sort of was one of the original, as far as the Gold Festival goes. You know, if you ever saw his truck, there's a big gold nugget in the back of his truck. So he was very, been a, I'd say, one of the pioneers in the gold area for McDowell County. So Don, with that being said, normally, what would occur during, you'd have to speak to your citizen comment, but you, we're going to count you as being a part of, the presentators are here tonight, but you know, you also may have something to add, that's fine, go ahead and...
If it's okay to add, just before you vote, I'd like to add...
Well, we're going to vote just soon as no other questions come forward from the board, we're going to go ahead and take action. So you better go ahead and do it now.
Okay. My thought, real quickly, okay, is I'll give this to you, and we'll make it real brief and short, okay? But the, to you folks who are about ready to vote on using taxpayer money to do something, I want to address to you about the something, okay? The North Carolina Gold Foundation was formed 2004, it's held its annual North Carolina Festival for 15 years. The Carson House was actually one of the first locations, hit the downtown Marion and the Johnson, Tom Johnson Camping Center. The desire for the North Carolina Gold Foundation was always to have the entire McDowell County benefit from the NC Gold Festival. The second festival was, for the next six years, was held at Tom Johnson Camping Center for six years, it was an Old Ford NC State Museum. Yeah. The festival attendees this last year met at the, the North Carolina Gold Festival, met at the North Carolina Gold Mines location property south of town. The festival attendees planned for gold, Old Bear and Creeks, where there's three actual gold mines, was also 2,500 vendors. So by all estimates, registered attendees, period of the decision for the North Carolina Gold Foundation to move the North Carolina Gold Festival to the McDowell County area where the gold was, was a smart move, because the benefits were much greater for the tourism and the best, the best crowd we've ever had. The Old Ford Festival has garnered the support of the Tourism Board, and has actually received more donated money in the first attempt to have their festival than the North Carolina Gold Foundation received in the entire 15 years of asking for support. Now, they are asking the county to, for taxpayers to support their desires to grow the festival, to allow the hiring of the event coordinator to help bring tourism into the county. It'd be appropriate if they just took a lesson from the Bigfoot Festival, which was awesome. May I ask the Honorable McDowell County Commissioners, why is there an effort to have a second Gold Festival on the same day in McDowell County anyway? If the Tourism Board was really trying to help tourism, why create a division of effort and promote confusion amongst the public? That being said, if you choose to support the Old Ford Festival, the North Carolina Gold Foundation asks that it only appropriate to also support the original North Carolina Gold Festival. Yes, I did use the word "original." I use the word because the history of the North Carolina Gold Foundation, the Gold Festival, has been held every year since 2004. This attempt to take over the North Carolina Gold Festival has already cost the North Carolina Gold Foundation unnecessary expenses, my attorneys, to hire a, file a cease and desist order of using the name, the North Carolina Gold Festival. The money should have been used for tourism. So, in that one, let me get to the next page here. Okay? A meeting with the Honorable Ralph Heiss gave a better explanation of what action the town of Old Ford had taken to take the ownership of the NC Gold Festival. The meeting also had given the North Carolina Gold Foundation a plan of action to have the signs which designate Old Ford as the North Carolina Gold Festival location removed from Interstate 40. All of this is unnecessary expense that could be used to promote the North Carolina Gold Festival. So you, Honorable McDowell County Commissioners, please do not give any taxpayer money to the efforts to promote another Gold Festival. Just do what is honorable and support the original North Carolina Gold Foundation Festival. Continued efforts to bring tourism to the McDowell County through the original North Carolina Gold Festival. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Okay, other comments, questions for Carol?
Just for all who cannot clarify some facts, please.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. First off, this is not the Tourism Development Authorities Festival. The town of Old Ford asked for our help. The town of Old Ford asked for that designation and received it as the official North Carolina Gold Festival. In past years, we have helped North Carolina Gold Foundation. We did reach out last year to the North Carolina Gold Foundation. So this is not a Tourism Authority Festival. We don't do that. So I just wanted to clarify.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Carol. Okay, comments or questions now for our presenters?
I'd like to get, now, what was the official stand the governor took on this? Did the governor...
The governor, yeah, he made a proclamation, is what he did. Originally, in 2014, the Tourism Development Authority created a sample letter and sent it out to the county, to the municipalities, to the chambers of commerce, asking them for their support to ask our representatives to create McDowell County as the official North Carolina Gold Festival. That, in translation and over time, became, however, the official North Carolina Gold Festival to be in Old Ford. The way that Senator Heiss's legislation reads, and he does have legislation in committee, I think as of 2015, that was still sitting in committee, that it did name Old Ford as that site. So there were a couple of steps there that took place. And then Governor McCrory did, in fact, I think it was maybe, I don't know, June 2016, did make a declaration that the town of Old Ford was the site of the official North Carolina Gold Festival.
And the North Carolina Gold Foundation is making a move to have that rescinded?
That's, no, we're not going to get into that.
But we're saying the other...
They're presenting, they're presenting that. And just out of courtesy, because of your, all your work, you're allowed to speak before.
Thank you, sir.
And I think the town would welcome, and this option was made a year ago, for Liz McCormick and for Don to work with us. We had actually, in committee, talked about doing like a shuttle service down to Bay Mountain, down to Lucky's Drive. That's still certainly an option. That would be a great option, as a matter of fact. But yes, committee, that's another thing.
I think it's something that both parties could work together.
Sure.
I think both groups have a lot to offer. And, Don, your group would not be opposed, I would sit down with this group and just work together, would you?
We would not, we have begged for that since the very beginning, but not one call has been made to us for that reason.
Well, what we'll do, we'll focus...
Excuse me.
Go ahead, Dave.
That is not true. I personally asked them to come and be part of it as the chairman last year. Be glad to have them this year if they want to. The door is wide open. It would benefit us all to work together.
Yes.
For the benefit of the entire county, and that's what our goal is.
Okay, sounds, so we're going to move on. But it sounds like there's, there's maybe some intent on both parties to get together. So we would greatly encourage, because as the board commissioners, we support the county and our city and municipalities within the county, so anything we can do to facilitate or help, that's what we're here to do. And it sounds to me like, you know, I know, Don, you're a great guy, I know, Dave, great guy, and the TDAs is trying to do what they can locally to help all parties advance McDowell County and the area of tourism. So you've got great, great lady coming in to help with that, and the chairman here is ready to see us. So I think, I think that we can turn something that might not be right now positive into something positive with a little bit of communication and dialogue. So that's what we would encourage you to do. We've got to take action on this tonight, so we can move on to the next item. Any other comments or questions?
I'd just like to say that I think that all this can be worked out, and I think as a board here, we would be willing to work with both parties to help this move forward. And based on that, then I'd like to go ahead and make a proposal we can move forward with this tonight.
Okay. Is that a motion to go ahead?
It's a motion, go ahead and do the $1,500.
Okay. Now, motion of a second?
It's 15. It is 15.
Does that say?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, last aye. Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move to the next item. We have our distinguished economic development coordinator with us tonight, Charles Abernathy, who's no stranger to this building right here. And actually, if you don't mind, sir, going in this out, and then Chuck, come on in, and we'll turn the floor to you once we declare this board to be...
We're about 10 minutes from the advertised...
Oh, we're ahead, okay. Let's back up. Let's pick up item A under old business, the smoking policy amendment, second reading. Okay, go ahead and explain.
Yes, sir. Last month, we had the first reading for the suggested amendments to the smoking policy. And again, you have that in front of you, for the benefit of the folks here who's watching. The county has had a smoking policy as it relates to county properties for, you know, 10 years. And that policy applied to the courthouse grounds, as well as some certain areas of recreational properties. There was a request from commissioners to look at the courthouse grounds. At this point, right now, smoking is allowed beyond 50 feet of the building. So if you're at 50 feet and 5 inches, you can smoke, but if you're within that area, you're not supposed to smoke. And so there was a request from the board to prohibit smoking in the entirety of the courthouse lawn. I think a lot of that had to do with, maybe because of the charge of freedom, seeing some of the improvements that we're making there, enhancing the veterans memorial, et cetera, and just to be appropriate in that area. So last month, you had the first reading. It's a little hard, it's not necessarily highlighted in your copy, it's kind of grayed out, but I'll read the change text. It says, "Smoking is prohibited on the lawn of McDowell County Courthouse. The lawn is defined as the space between the driveway, the front of the building, and the city sidewalks of Main Street and East Court Street." There is a change in the definition of what smoking means, just to kind of include a multitude of different acts, including pipes, hookah, electronic cigarettes, anything that generates smoke or vapor. So this would prohibit vaping, that sort of thing, so.
Good. Comments or questions? There being now, what's the pleasure of the board?
About everybody one time.
Make a motion, we approve, Don, the McDowell County Smoking Policy is presented.
Okay, you have a motion, you have a second?
I'm not quite ready to vote on this. I think if we get back up and have a comment or two on this.
Okay, lower. I'll second, I'll second to get to the discussion now. We've got a motion, second now, discussion.
I don't smoke, and I don't like to smell it, but, you know, there has to be somewhere available for these people that do. And I would think that it would be a little bit discriminatory to, as they say there. Is there anywhere along there that they can smoke if they need to out to or whatever?
For members of the public? And is that your...
Yeah.
The way it's written, there wouldn't be, in the grassy area, it would be completely prohibited, so they would either need to be out...
They could go out on the street.
They should go on the city sidewalk, again, that's making a city issue. They are aware of this.
Okay.
Just like, you know, if a restaurant on Main Street, they offer him to smoke, you, their clients, customers have to smoke out on the street. It's pretty similar to that.
Okay. Other comments, questions?
Is this your employees also?
No, you're fine.
Is this your employees also? There's nowhere going to be dismediated on for them?
They wouldn't be allowed to smoke in front of the building, courthouse lawn, et cetera. They would have to find somewhere else on county property. Again, the way it was written, based on the question.
Even hospitals, boys have to go completely off-campus to smoke. Baxter, Baxter's leaves the plant, then goes out on 221 and smokes. So I have seen smoking in cannabis, but they're not supposed to be...
That's fine.
We've got, I hear occasionally for the ball fields and stuff, and they believe, you know, we've got policies there because you're around kids and secondhand smoking. And there's still people smoking inside this ball field, you know, smoking in restrooms and stuff. And they asked me who to report to, and said, "We're in charge up there, that ball field should enforce that." I said, "Well, we're about as high as we can go." And I said, "Well, just contact..." Actually, we live near each other's home.
All may say.
Yeah. But occasionally, we still get those. That's what kind of started a lot of this, I know, and...
Well, the good thing is, on the city sidewalks, there's benches. That way, if you smoke, you can sit down and smoke, whereas in that little, small area from where 50 feet out from the courthouse door, I mean, it's very minimal anyway. So, and there's no place to sit if somebody wants to sit and smoke, so it's probably fairly prevalent among governmental properties for that.
A lot are moving completely banned on property, on the gathering.
Is there a cigarette button there out there for the street where they can...
There is.
There is on the street. You know, I just, as long as there's a place that they can, because I understand, you know, people, a lot of people that have smoked for years and years and years, they're not just going to be able to hold them down and all the way coming up really easy. So I have, I have certain, have respected feelings for those people as well.
Okay, you have further for the comments, questions?
Tobacco products in general, chewing tobacco. Nothing worse than walking on sidewalk. And I know it's not here smoking only, but to me, that's one of the things that I saw is that it wishes tobacco products aren't good, because we had the issue chewing at high school and then spit on the sidewalk. And the public don't want to walk to somebody else's backer.
It's worse than cigarette, but let them into grass.
So, I wish that that was added, but this is actually a smoking policy, but...
And the good thing, if the commissioner does see something they want, that's not addressed in this, you can always, as a board, run it back to the board, and then the board can vote to have our planning board revisit with a specific request that you need looked at. Okay, you have a motion?
We don't have a motion, I say.
That's right.
That's right.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, last aye. Okay. Let's move to item A, and the new businesses will be tax management, Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
These are fairly receiving. We do have some write-off requests. They're your first page, number 26. Several folks that are deceased with no estate, and then several that are past the 10-year statute of limitations. Again, we're not allowed to have collection activities for any accounts past 10 years.
Okay, comments, questions? Let's pledge the board.
Question or approval, tax board, if you're presenting.
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second the debate.
A discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, last aye. Let's move to board appointments, we can squeeze this one in. We have a panel board that's, member's term that's expired, Van Boyd's term has expired, and he has submitted his application, and he's been on this board for a period of time. Is this a second reading?
This is the first reading.
First reading. And does this board need somebody on there immediately?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I can advertise it.
Okay. Well, we've got a recommendation, you go ahead and reappoint Mr. Boyd. And you have advertised currently already.
Yes.
And you do have applicants that are interested?
You do, okay. This will be a first reading, and then we'll vote next month. Okay, let's go to item C, the Glenwood Parade and Road Closure. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. A couple of years ago, NCDOT changed their procedure for closure of roads for parades and street festivals, et cetera. It used to be a lot more informal, but they did ask that it be formalized at the local level. The county does not put on the Glenwood Parade sponsor or what have you, but we are asked, since we are the local government of record for that community, that we submit a road closure for roads in question. So it's actually an ordinance, and so on page 49, you see an ordinance for closing mostly Old 221 on the Saturday of the 24th, from 3:00 to 4:30 in the afternoon. And again, once you approve this, it's sent to the office, national office of NCDOT, and it just makes everything legal and kosher for that parade.
Okay, it's a great parade. If you've never been to it, go to it. Lots of candy for the kids, take a big bag, as a fill of it, and just a great parade. So what's the pleasure of the board concerning this ordinance?
Sure, I'm going to approve the whole beach.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, last aye. Okay. Now, this time, let's move back to our appointment schedule and go to our 4:30 appointment. Mr. Abernathy, come on in, sir. And at this time, I will declare the board in a public hearing setting to receive comment concerning an economic development project. Mr. Wood can go ahead and give an overview. Mr. Wood, anything you need to add?
Just very briefly, Chuck probably mentioned the advertising... Just very briefly, and Chuck probably mentioned, the advertisement was for a higher grant match, and the good news is, it's a lower grant match, a lower incentive request. So you have twelve thousand five hundred in your packet, and it's actually ten thousand will be the proposed incentive.
You're right.
The floor is yours.
Well, as you know, the general statutes authorize just about every action that county commissioners can take. And so GS one fifty-eight seven lays out the procedures and what you have to do in order to grant incentives for job creation and new investment that occurs. Those incentives can occur for new company locations, as well as existing industry expansions. You did one of these several months ago that has since been announced, which was crane resistive flux, very similar amounts to what we were talking about tonight. Basically, the state's procedure is that the governor announces the project, and for a variety of reasons, in addition to that, we don't name the company until everything is announced by the state first. So what we have is a, is an existing company that will add sixteen jobs to their workforce. They pay wages higher than the state average. They offer insurance to their employees at a rate of at least fifty percent, which is required in the statute. The investment is either three point four or three point five million dollars in machinery and equipment and upgrading to the, to the building. So you're, you're looking at, I multiply it out, but sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars a year in property taxes, that that, that that would generate in addition to the sixteen jobs. The program, again, like I said two months ago, is saving you substantial dollars if you look at how the, the original incentive practice, where we would match the One North Carolina program at three thousand dollars a job. You can do the math on that real quick and multiply three thousand times sixteen, which is what, what that incentive could have been. What we're doing with the One NC is we're doing the state, excuse me, with the building reuse, is twelve thousand five hundred dollars of state monies that has to be used to outfit internally to the, to the building. The company matches that two hundred thousand dollar amount with forty-five percent money, and then the county comes in with five percent. So the company and the county are doing half, and the state is doing half. So you've got two hundred thousand dollars of, of state money coming in. It's really an exciting project. It's a company that doesn't necessarily come to mind, but a company that's been there a long time, great product, and I look forward to it being announced. The job creation, as Mr. Woodton said, will probably be higher. And if I can explain this, by going with a lower number, the, the company is, I had to say on the hook, what word would you, they're obligated for, for a lower number that they have to be. So it's in their interest to, to understate it. The job creation probably is going to be higher, and as Mr. Woodton said, that saves you money by them coming in with a lower number. So what the statute says is that the public is afforded the opportunity to ask questions and express their opinion about what we're doing.
Okay. Thank you, that's a great lead-in. At this time, is there anybody present, based upon information you've heard tonight from the Economic Development Coordinator, who would like to speak regarding that information or ask a question? We'll start on this side of the ring, okay? Nobody, okay? We'll go to this side. Just raise your hand if you want to speak, and we'll get you right up. Okay, all right. Anybody in the hallway? Okay, I don't think so, all right. Anybody in the kitchen? We'll get you. Make sure we don't leave out anybody out. All right, do I hear a motion to go out of the public hearing?
Motion to go out of the public.
Motion?
Say it.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. And opposed, last side. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board concerning the, the request based upon the job creation and investment?
And we're talking about a ten thousand dollar match, is that?
Ten thousand, taxes sixteen or seventeen. See, getting it back within a year.
Oh, yeah, it's just, it's a no-brainer. We have to move, move forward with this. I, I'm proud of where our county's at right now. We are about, what, three point four or something like that on our unemployment rate.
McDowell County has the fourth lowest unemployment rate in the state of North Carolina out of a hundred counties. Very important. If people want to work in McDowell County, they can work. People who don't have a job don't want to work, and laziness should never be rewarded in our group. And so if you want to work, you can get a job. And there's, and I'll just take infomercial right quick, thanks Tony for that reminder. And just to say, if you, if you need a job, if you need employment in McDowell County, see all your major manufacturers, they are looking and they are hiring, so. But yeah, you're right, Tony, fourth lowest in the state, so it's a, it's a great, a great time if you want to work in McDowell County. And, sorry.
Well, you've said it all, but we're, we're very proud of where McDowell County's at today, and based on that, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the match on that.
Can you bring a second? Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. And opposed, last side. Okay, thank you, check.
Thank you.
Now, let's, we're here to move to item D, under new business, this will be the admin items, Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir, please, out.
Yes, sir, just two items here. The first one, again, similar to the tax write-offs, you have some EMS account write-offs that are past the ten years of collectability. Again, we work with folks, but there are accounts that are, there's no state, if they pass away, or they have no means, and so these are, they're non-collectible, we're asking the write-off.
Okay, comments or questions concerning that? They're being them, let's pleasure the board.
Motion to approve the write-off.
They got a motion, you have a second?
Say it.
Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. And opposed, last side. Okay, just gonna give it a second.
The other item, yes, sir. We have a request from DSS to purchase four Chevrolet Equinoxes for that department. We did buy vehicles for the department several months ago, and we, based on some requests from our, from admin staff, we looked into their fleet, and they travel a tremendous amount of miles, all the departments do, especially Child Welfare and a few others, but they were in pretty much dire straits for the vehicle fleet. And so we did have funds available, we do receive some state and federal reimbursement on the vehicles, so we're at, are asking for the purchase for more, to help get them where they need to be, because they were, that's something very harmful, so this will help tremendously.
And it's been standard policy for the county to, to try to spread the cost out of purchased vehicles. I know we do an ambulance every year, we do, how many shares?
About three.
Three shares cars. So by doing that every year, it, it softens the impact, so, and keeps them independent. We won't, we won't, we want to, when somebody calls with an EMS call, we want a vehicle that can get there and provide the life care that that patient needs. And, you know, with DSS, everybody knows that in McDowell County, much like most of the state, there's a spike in crime and drugs, and it's so sad. And an offshoot of that is the demands placed upon DSS and those different agencies down there that deal with children who are being abused and mistreated. So it's good that the board does this every year to try to maintain an up-to-date fleet that's the pinnacle. Other comments or questions?
I just wish it had been Ford instead of Chevrolet.
I did ask.
It's gonna be hard to vote for Chevles.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
I'm shocked.
All in favor of the motion, do we have a motion?
Make a motion, we approve a request of DSS for four Chevrolet, Chevrolet Equinoxes, with a purchase price of seven thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars coin cent off state contract that's financing.
I second that motion.
Okay, discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. And opposed, last side. Okay, thank you, let's move to item E, under new business, this will be a resolution for farmers, so Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. The North Carolina Farm Bureau has sent the attached resolution to, I'm sure all one hundred counties in the state, asking for endorsement of the North Carolina Farm Act of twenty eighteen, which is attached, and it was passed by the legislature in this past session. So it, it does seem odd, maybe, that you're passing something that's already endorsed, something that's already been passed, but I think that they're looking for the county, each county, to stake their commitment to how important farming is for the state of North Carolina, the people, and the economy, especially, you know, I think some of the comments they made, especially in the light of Florence, where tremendous amount of farms were impacted down there, so they're just looking for that reassurance that the counties do support the farming industry.
Okay, comments or questions concerning the resolution?
Sure, I make a motion, we approve the resolution.
Say it. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. And opposed, last side. Okay, let's go to item number, do we have a Carson House item appointment scheduled? Item at five o'clock, so we've got reports, communications, so at this time, Mr. Wood, anything that commissioners need, or Matt Clark?
We did want to note that we have communicated with several of you for the November meeting. It would normally be on November twelfth, which is when the Veterans Day is observed, and so we had heard some feedback that maybe moved into the nineteenth week later would be preferable, so again, if that's okay, we plan on that.
That sounds great. Let's move to system comment.
I have something.
Oh, okay, go ahead, ma'am.
For the McDowell News, they do the best of every year, and I received the certificates congratulating you, Chairman Walker, for being one of the best elected county officials.
Thank you.
And also Barry McPeters, I've asked Chairman Todd with you.
Thank you. We were trying not to do that, y'all, we, but she, our clerk, we, we're blessed to have a very good clerk. If you ever have any, any interaction or need to contact the board, and we're very open, and our phone numbers are out there, and, you know, we're easy to get over. But if you can't reach us, our clerk to the board does an outstanding job, and we're fortunate to have her, so Cheryl, thanks so much for what you do. Now, let's go to system comment. Do we have anybody who has signed up to speak? Is there anybody else who would like to sign up to speak? This time, we'll move to item five, excuse me, item D, our five o'clock appointment scheduled item, and we have Martha Jordan with us, and Martha, come on in and introduce yourself to everybody present, and we are so glad to be here to conduct the county's business as we do customarily every October in this particular house, so you go right ahead.
Well, thank you very much for coming to, to visit with us and here in the Carson House, and it is an honor to be able to, for you all to sit right here where our county was founded, and we are, are just so rich in history in McDowell County. And I want to take this opportunity to invite the county commissioners and staff to come for a personal tour, and we'll, we'll schedule that meeting when you come, so you can find out lots more of the information. I found out, I find out new things about this county every single day when I come to work, and we are so blessed to have this facility here, and it's a great opportunity to share with our community, and I just wanted to, okay, how much we appreciate the support for the one hundred seventy-fifth celebration. We have a lot of activities going on, and there are some events that will probably be built upon and become regular things. I hope everybody has taken time to enjoy the beautiful artwork downtown Marion. We have had wonderful experiences here with living history with, we had over eleven hundred children just last week come through the house and have living, participate in living history demonstrations, even in the rain, we, we managed, we had to do a lot of cleaning all Friday after, after all those rainy days, but it was a great experience for them. We had the, the music and the, the play out here that has had a great response, so we hope maybe to continue with some activities like that in the future. So again, welcome and welcome guests here, and please come back and visit as often at the Carson House. And I want to invite all of you to, to come to a free event that we're having, December first and second, the Carson House will be open for candlelight tours, beginning at six P.M., and the house will be decorated in all-natural greenery. We have some beautiful tour guides that'll be dressed in period outfits to, to tell you about the house and some of the holiday traditions here, so, so welcome and come back in time. Thank you again.
Martha, I want to say while you're here, that I, I know that Ammon Nutt, is she still a current board member for you?
Yes.
Okay. And other board members have expressed a desire to have directional signage off the bypass, and, and the board has really just tried to, tried to make that happen. We've tried our best to make it happen, good years, and with the help of Senator Heiss, we're proud to say that that's going to occur. There's going to be a directional sign. We were hoping to have one to present to you and your board tonight, but it did not happen, but Mr. Woodton and Heiss's office has, has really worked hard on behalf of the board, and that's going to happen, and we're so excited, because we need to bring people who are traveling by, they need to know you're here.
Yes.
And so we are so pumped up about you getting the directional sign. That, that made our day to know that's going to happen.
It is going to happen, yes, thank you very much.
And one other piece of history, I know that maybe last year, we toured downstairs, and for those that are present and who are watching, I love history, and they had, this was the seat of county government here initially, but also, there was a jail here, and it's rather ridiculous right now, there, and there was a flood, and don't ask me the year of the flood, I can't give that to you. You can.
Nineteen sixteen.
Nineteen sixteen, and a prisoner died underneath the house. So if you want to learn some history about McDowell County, you come see this young lady out here, come for a tour, and, and, you know, it's Halloween coming up, October thirty-first, and, you know, there, there's the reports that there's, there might be a ghost in the building somewhere too. Now, we can't confirm or deny that, so we're not on record stating confirmation or denial, but she'll be glad to tell you all about that on one of these tours. So make sure to come by and enjoy a county landmark. This is a historical place, and, and make sure that if you've got grandkids or the younger generation, they need to know, eleven hundred school kids, what, fourth, what grade was that, came through?
Fourth graders and eighth graders.
Okay. Let's get everybody else out here and on side.
Well, we're also having a follow-up event on November the first. All the fourth graders who attended can bring their parents and come back to an evening here at the Carson House, so we'd love for, for y'all to come and join us then. A lot of the reenactment from the Over Mountain Victory Trail will be here, and other presenters, we'll have musicians here, we're feeding them, and so it's going to be a fun time to have that much follow-up for those families.
Right, right. And the board is proud to say, we support with tax dollars, this is property, and, and we, we don't, we don't shy away from making that known, we're sort of proud of that, that we support this historical house right here, and to some degree, what is on here, so.
It takes a lot to keep an old property and, you know, the collections that we have, and we appreciate all your support, we really do, thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Yeah, and, and Mr. Vice Chairman Peterson has, he wasn't with us in my ear, but he told me something right quick, so very good to bring that out of there.
Well, what I think in the past, bringing this on, is that we've always taken care of the meal, this Carson House, they always provide the meal for us, so we always, I think we've always picked up that deal of the meal, and I think it'd be very fitting, we continue to do that process tonight, and I make a motion, we'll take care of that.
Okay, motion, you have a second?
Say it.
Second? Second, discussion, all in favor, say aye. You oppose, like so. Okay, at this time, we have covered everything on our agenda for tonight's meeting, and before we go ahead and dismiss, Dr. Haney is with us tonight. And Dr. Haney has another gentleman, if you want to know historical information, this is one of your go-to people right here in McDowell County. And he is, I've been a commissioner since '02, and I've had the privilege of being in this room every October since that date, and one of the highlights is to hear Dr. Haney pray, and he always blesses the food that commissioners will eat here in a little bit. So at this time, Dr. Haney, if you don't mind, sir, come on in right over here, and if you want to say a few words and bless the food, we would greatly appreciate that. Then we'll see you right there, Dr. Haney, right there. There's a camera. You come over here. Right over here, there you go, side of the clock, that'd be great, Dr. Haney.
Well, for saying a few words, I might tell you just briefly a bit about the man who was the host for the first meeting of, and the organization of the county in this room some 175 years ago. This man was Jonathan Logan Carson. He was conundrumist Logan Carson. He was the youngest son of the builder of this house, who inherited the house and some property. He was, at that time, the second most wealthy man in McDowell County. He had a value of $50,000 that he reported to the census taper. The wealthiest family had reported $70,000. As a matter of comparison, my great-great-grandfather, who was a contemporary of him, had a total value of $530. As a matter of fact, 41% of the total wealth in the county resided in 23 households in the county. Somewhat shocking number. Well, I think that's perhaps enough historical comment. I would add that here on the plantation, he had a total of 19, oh, sorry, of just short of 3,000 acres of land at that time. Two other persons in the county had a similar amount of land, Alany Bergen and Neil Higgins. He had, Mr. Carson had some 200 livestock here on the plantation, as well as 28 African-American slaves at that time. So it was a going operation. It's interesting to note all the different products were reproduced then. Surprisingly, there was a good deal of flax broom and tobacco. Of course, the money crop was what was called Indian corn, and Mr. Carson produced some 4,000 bushels of Indian corn the previous year. I think one other family household in the county produced something like 5,000 bushels. So all that prosperity came to a quick end with the Civil War, and at the end of the Civil War, Mr. Carson, his total value was $8,300. A bit of a drop from $50,000. Well, let us pray. O God, our help in ages past, and our hope for years to come. We pause to give you thanks for all good government and those who dedicate their lives to service. We are particularly appreciative of the year, the 175 years of legacy which have come to this county, and for the gifts of those who have devoted themselves to its service. Now we ask that you would bless into us this food and drink through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Haney. This time, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion of second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. You oppose, like so. Thanks for being here tonight, everybody.